Good evening. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Thursday, April 16, 2015, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the April 20, 2015, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notices required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV Online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening and our AVP students. First, we have Chuck Bramman. Chuck, thank you for coming. Our students on the TV crew tonight are from the mothership, Cyfair. We have Matt Schneider, Omar Maroquín, Andrew Gunstream, Ed Cifuentes, Katie Larson, Diane Kim, and their advisor is Kevin Corkin. So we appreciate you guys helping us out tonight. The board will hear the following report. "The Administration Will Provide an Oral Report on the Plans to Reorganize and Expand Student Support Programs at Winfern High School for the 2015-16 School Year and Beyond." Our presenters will be Linda Macias, Mary Jadloski, and the ever-famous Principal Martha Struthers.[207.54][207.54](Laughter).[208.54][208.54](Applause).
Good evening, President Ryan, trustees, and Dr. Henry. For the past year, the curriculum instruction team along with Martha Struthers, our principal at Winfern, have been discussing and planning for opportunities to enhance the great programs that they currently offer at Winfern and also increase services along with looking at ways to be able to provide more support to more students, so even more students enrolled and benefiting from Winfern. The plan that Mary and Martha will be sharing with you in just a little bit includes the additions of programs to support at-risk high school students as well as programs to support the advanced needs of students both at Winfern and all of our other high schools in our district. So at this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Mary and then Martha will share as well.
Good evening. I am so very pleased to be able to tell you about the next chapter at Winfern. We have exciting plans for the future, and I'm very jealous that Martha has her own fan club.[280.27][280.27](Laughter).
It's just me, and so it's not big.[285.27][285.27](Laughter). We usually meet on Tuesdays.[289.12][289.12](Laughter). Yeah, and Tom, Tom's also in the fan club.
Tom is a fan, yeah.
Tom and I meet at the boat down the road. We'll talk about that later.
So let me tell you about some of our exciting plans for Winfern. For state accountability purposes, Winfern is currently an alternative education campus. Thus, they must meet modified targets on all the state indices. However, for federal accountability, Winfern is held to the same graduation standards as the other 10 comprehensive high schools. The small number of students at Winfern means that each of those students represents a larger percentage than a single student at any one of the comprehensive high schools. So in the future, Winfern will move from a campus to a program. In doing so, they would be removed from the constraints of both state and federal accountability. This change in no way prohibits them from offering services currently in place to 11th and 12th grade students. The plan is to expand the programs offered to support a wider range of student needs. New program options include dual credit, credit recovery, an online original credit pilot, support for overaged ninth graders, and of course, the continuation of the current program at Winfern to help upper class 11th and 12th grade students. As I already mentioned, this plan frees the campus from accountability constraints, allowing them to serve a broader range of student needs. So you see the accountability transition there. Winfern is a campus and meets and is responsible for the state and federal accountability targets this year, and that will continue next year as we create a transition plan. So the last graduation group with the Winfern High School diploma will be the class graduating in June of 2016. From that point forward, students finishing their credits at Winfern will get the diploma of the sending or home high school, but nothing else about the student's program will change. In an effort to expand dual credit options, English III, English IV, US History, and government dual credit courses will be offered in the evening, two days weekly, at Winfern. Winfern students, as well as students from the other 10 comprehensive high schools, may take dual credit courses there in the evening. Students may take an eighth class in the evening, or seniors might choose to early release and then take their seventh course in the evening at Winfern. This program allows students to access dual credit courses that may not be offered at their home campus. The dual credit teacher will be a credentialed staff member from one of the high schools who will teach an extra class those two evenings weekly. The dual credit programming will begin next school year. We will offer a transportation shuttle from two remote sites to support travel to Winfern in the early evening. Many students need assistance in regaining credits that they've lost for one reason or another. The Edge Annuity online curriculum that we use supports students in this area. Students are able to work independently and accelerate their credit accumulation and catch up, if you will. Credit recovery labs will be open from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on evenings when dual credit classes meet. Priority, of course, will be given to 12th grade students who are working to graduate with their peers in June. Again, we will offer a transportation shuttle from two remote sites to support the students' ability to get there to Winfern in the evening. We have juniors who sometimes need more than 14 credits to graduate, seven in the junior year, seven in the senior year, and seniors who need more than seven credits to graduate with their class in June. So an opportunity to take an eighth class online during either or both the junior or senior year may provide students the chance to graduate on time. The Edge Annuity curriculum, online curriculum, is rigorous, and it provides the necessary components to ensure that students master the concepts needed to earn first-time credit in certain courses. We plan to conduct a pilot to further extend the use of online curriculum so that more options for students may be increased. This opportunity will be used on a student-by-student basis as needs arise to support 11th and 12th graders who need more than seven credits yearly to graduate with their peer group. The classes will run during the same timeframe as the dual credit courses, that is, 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening, and as with the other programs, shuttle transportation from two remote sites will assist students in getting to Winfern for those evening classes. We also have an issue with overage ninth graders. The comprehensive high schools need support and assistance when faced with supporting these overage ninth graders. These students who may be as old as 17 or older and still have not accumulated enough credits or the right credits to move to their sophomore standing. These students would be better supported in a smaller and more monitored environment, one similar to the one that already exists at Winfern for 11th and 12th graders. The curriculum and Winfern teams will collaborate during this next 15-16 school year to design a program to help these overage ninth graders. The plan will include the courses listed, a protocol for identifying the students, and criteria for selecting them. We will offer eight periods daily and a shuttle to transport the kids back and forth between their home campus and Winfern. Students will be able to access this programming in the 2016-2017 school year. More to come on this one. And then, of course, Winfern will continue to offer its current students, those 11th and 12th graders that are attending there now and others like them in the future. Nothing about the changes will affect these students directly. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Martha now, the Winfern Principal, to speak about the staff's enthusiasm and support of this plan. Martha?
President Ryan, and trustees, and Dr. Henry, thank you so much for this time to be able to talk about this exciting program. Y'all may not know this, but come this August, it is our 20th anniversary of welcoming kids to Winfern. And so I think it's very appropriate and fitting and exciting that we forge this new pathway forward. I do want to tell you that while we're excited now, it didn't initially start that way. There was quite a bit of apprehension when I sort of shared some of these changes with our staff in January. The only reason I share that with you is because you may also be having some apprehension. So what I'm going to do for you is what I did for my staff. I'm going to dispel that apprehension and show you how really exciting this is. Like, poor little things, look at 'em over there.[756.11][756.11](Laughter). They had these big puppy-dog eyes, January 6, when we talked about it. It was like, what did we do wrong? Are they going to close this school? No, none of that. And I convinced them that this was a more wonderful way to fully utilize this great campus, and we're going to be able to serve lots of different students, create special programs to reach out to other special populations throughout our district. So with that being said, I do want to share with you what I did with my staff. So on that day, I gave them each a three-by-five card, and here they are. And I asked them to, on the front, write down all of the negatives that they could possibly think about these changes. What was, what could, every obstacle, every challenge, everything negative that they could possibly think of. And that was my way of sort of getting the emotional vomit out and flush the toilet and let's move forward. Then I asked them to turn the card over and to write down all of the positives that they could think of that could possibly come from this change. So all of the benefits that could possibly come. And so then we discussed them one by one, and slowly they started coming around. And we've had a continued conversation since January about how we can embrace this change and really go forward in a really positive direction. We truly do think this is a change to celebrate, and how we communicate it to our community and to our home campuses is key. And so you will see nothing but enthusiastic support from me and my staff. I know they joined me in that. What I did was I basically shared three points with them. The first was that we would be freed from the constraints of the accountability system that we have to meet, both at the state level and at the federal level. Every year, it has been harder and harder to take the kind of kids that we have wanted to take because of this new accountability system. It has made it more difficult. And so we've been able to take fewer and fewer kids, meaning we're not supporting the district and our home campuses as we should. So we will be freed from those constraints, and we're going to start taking, we're super excited about taking those overage freshmen and sophomores and being able to help them because we know that those kids are at risk of dropping out. When you're 17, sitting in a classroom of 14-year-old kids, that's hard. That's real hard. It's demoralizing. And so we want to bring them onto our campus and give them that sense of belonging. The other thing that I pointed out to my staff was that this is going to forge a closer relationship with our home campuses. You know, it's one thing to be accountable to a faceless state accountability system and federal accountability system. It's an entirely different thing, a much more personal thing, to be accountable to our home campuses because what they will essentially be doing is handing off their kids to us, vesting trust that we're going to do the right thing for them, and we are going to be able to get them to pass all those EOC assessments, earn all the credits they need for graduation, and to get to that graduation victory. And so I see it as almost a higher level of accountability because those people that run those schools work so hard, and I sit with them every day. I did today with those 10 home campus principals, and they're my colleagues and friends, and I want to do the right thing by them, and my staff joins me in that. And then the last thing I shared with my staff back in January was that the essence of Winfern and what makes it a truly special campus is not going away. It will still be there. It will still be intact. And so I pointed out to them some of the things that are so special about our campus because on these cards, they kept saying, oh, gosh, we're not going to really be a school family anymore. No, we will still be a small, cohesive, family-like learning environment. We will still have those high expectations for behavior and performance, and most of all, attitude. We will still have that high warmth along with building those strong relationships. We will still, my challenge to every single, my charge to every staff member will still be, every student is the responsibility of every staff member. Whether that student sits in your class or not, you are responsible for that kid to be successful. And certainly, the most important thing about our school is that we try to create a sense of belonging for every single student so that when they're absent, it gets noticed, and we ask them the next day, where were you? We missed you. Is everything okay? And you know, that sense of belonging is so key. Whether you're two or 92, you need to feel like you belong somewhere and that you make a difference on a daily basis. I also assured them that we would continue with the small-size classes because that is one of the key reasons that we're able to make a difference for our kiddos. We'll still have that high teacher-student interaction and both the traditional whole-group instruction coupled with the individualized attention that every student needs. I also assured them that we would continue to have the concept of campus of choice in place. We still want our students to know that this is an opportunity. We want them to go ahead and fill out that application because we want it to be a deliberate choice on their part so that they know that this is an opportunity they should embrace and go forward to be victorious. We also want the home campus to assist us in those choices by continuing to write the recommendation from the home campus counselor and the home campus assistant principal, helping us to make good decisions about which students will really embrace the opportunity that Winfern offers. And finally, with those applications, we will continue our reflective review of every application by the Winfern administrative team so that the kids that come to us will really, really take advantage of the opportunity that's extended to them. I also assured my staff that the memorable graduations featuring those student narratives chronicling the Winfern experience will continue. We will continue to celebrate our students and at our graduations. And most of all, probably the most important thing that defines our campuses is that whatever it takes mindset, that will continue because with that mindset, we will be able to embrace the next chapter of Winfern. Thank you.[1158.15][1158.15](Applause).
Thank you, Martha. I'd like to just take a moment to thank the Winfern staff that are here for coming out and joining us and for being a partner with us as we move into this new chapter for Winfern. So Winfern staff, will you please stand to be recognized?[1178.46][1178.46](Applause). Thank you, thank you. Mr. Ryan will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Jackson? Martha, you might want to come on back up in case somebody asks a question for you.
First, a comment. I see this as a bold stroke, Mark. I see it as potentially being able to answer a need that this district has had as our opportunities grow and change, as they have over the past three or four years very dramatically. I find it encouraging that you and your staff would have the educational courage to take this step. So I see it all as moving at a good point. Whenever I go and visit your school for the baked potato lunch, instead of sitting with my colleagues, I go and sit where the students are, and I always ask them questions, too. The concept that you have embodied here, the new one, addresses many of the concerns that I heard from the students, and I think it helps to address the fact that, yes, they're part of a new family, but they haven't lost their ties at the home campus. I heard that loud and clear from my board shadows, and I've had two of them from Winfern. I also think that it addresses the very real concern that when you have an overage ninth grader, as you have said before, Mark, those are the ones who are at the greatest risk of dropping out, and I see this as being a valuable step in addressing that. I do have one question, and it's not really for Martha, this is really more for Linda. And what would my questions be without an edge to them, right? The newspapers have had a number of stories about some of our neighboring districts with a undisclosed deficiency that only came to light in the beginning of this year. Dr. Macias, is what we're doing because we've identified that same type of situation here in Cyfair, or is it really the way that I see it, that we're providing new services to reflect our changing opportunities?
Mary, go ahead. I'll answer that.
It absolutely has nothing to do with anything like that. It is all about meeting a greater student need, a more diverse student need, and it is also about using that building to its full enrollment capacity, offering additional options, having extended day options, trying to meet the lives that students live these days, longer hours, extended hours, a stretch, and meeting their needs. It's all about that.
Specifically, and really totally about enhancing the programs to meet a greater population, more children, whether they're looking for advanced opportunities or they're looking for opportunities to earn their credits so to graduate on time.
Excellent. Thank you. Christine?
First, I want to attest to the warmth at Winfern. Been there multiple times and spent time, and I love standing there and hearing Martha talk to students. She knows what's going on in their lives. Y'all know what's going on in their lives, and you help them through it, and I just think that y'all do a fabulous job with that. I'm very excited about the transportation aspect of this. My class at Lone Star, that's my biggest frustration, is not having public buses who can get those students to my class on time or even there. I have a lot who mom and dad both work. They can only get there when mom and dad can bring them, and so their grades suffer, and I think their self-esteem suffers. So I love the transportation aspect. Kind of on, piggyback to what Tom said about maybe, or y'all were talking about other opportunities, I think that there are students who want to be involved in school activities, whatever it is, but can't because of maybe they're lacking in some credits. Having these nighttime classes will give them opportunity to also be involved maybe at their home campus in an after-school activity, but stay current with their classes. So you know, three great things there. I did want to just ask about the Edge Annuity, and are we currently using this in the district? Or just get some more information about it because I think that this is one of the ways of the future, so.
We've had a credit recovery online curriculum for probably eight or 10 years, and we've used it for credit recovery. We did a look last year. The platform that we were using, the curriculum, was not addressing the appropriate rigor in regard to the end-of-course test, et cetera, wasn't rigorous enough to prep kids up for AP, et cetera. So what we did was we did an extensive look with teachers, curriculum coordinators, et cetera, last year, and we found this new platform. It's called Edge Annuity. So it's just a replacement curriculum. It's much stronger. It's much more rigorous. The curriculum is better aligned with the new standards that we're dealing with and addressing and the new testing framework that we're working with this school year. So it's better, stronger. So in addition to credit recovery opportunities, we're going to give kids opportunities to do their first-time, their original credit learning in that environment.
Good. Thank you.
John?
Yes, I like the concept and the direction, but I am, I want to ask this question because at every graduation that I've attended at Winfern, the students have expressed such an appreciation for the personnel there, the program that they are in to help them to get what they could not get at one of our major campuses. And it seems like they embrace, this is my school. This is Winfern. And I'm wondering, were any of the students, was there any inquiry with any of the students? Because what we're saying now is that you attend here, you get all of this, and then after a year or something, you go back and graduate at the home school? Or is that, is that my missing something?
No, actually, that's not the case. The students that finish out their 11th and 12th grade year will absolutely, the overage ninth graders, we fully anticipate that when they get over there, they'll stay there till they graduate.
They all do.
They all do. And we'll still have those wonderful Winfern graduations. The only difference is their diploma will register back to their home campus because Winfern won't be a standalone campus, and that's really in accountability.
They'll open their diploma cover, say Jersey Village or Langley Creek.
It'll just be the diploma of their home campus. But we enjoy them, all of us. The staff, you know, Roy's team and Dr. Macias's team, we go every time, and we enjoy it so much. And what you're saying is absolutely the case, and that is the mindset at Winfern, and that's not going to change, I'm certain, and Martha and the staff are committed to that. So that's not going to change. We'll still have those wonderful graduations. It's just about what that diploma reads.
So the current program that you know today, Dr. O, is staying in place.
Staying intact completely.
That is not changing.
We're just adding different groups of students with me.
And the diplomas is a different high school.
But you avoid the biggest fear that my staff has, so.
Any additional questions? I'm glad you brought that up, John, because I think one of the things that stands out at Winfern is the culture of the campus. It's amazing. You know, we've all been, the graduations, you know, tell everybody, if it's your first one, bring a Kleenex.
Absolutely.
Because you're like, oh, my gosh, I cannot believe the kids and what they've gone through and how you, staff members, helped them succeed. So we are all very grateful for all that you do, and I'm sure, Martha, you've got plans for a 20th anniversary party, maybe, or something?
Well, I might get a committee together.
Yeah, if you could, could.
Committee's here.
You could tie it in with the lunch. That's good.
Sure, that works for me.
Yeah, we're good.
That works for me. I want y'all to know that this, I did not ask them to come. This was totally organic. This was a staff-driven decision to be here tonight, so.
Very good.
It means a lot to me and says a lot about you guys.
We're glad they're here. It's, you know, it's usually packed in here.[1750.15][1750.15](Laughter). Y'all caught us on a slow night, I'll tell you that.[1755.15][1755.15](Laughter). Mary, Linda, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's a great job.[1759.51][1759.51](Applause). Agenda Item 4C has been moved to Monday, where we'll talk about the renovations at Pridgen and the natorium. So if any of y'all want to bring your swimsuits and can hang out, Monday's the night to do it. The board will now review and discuss the following action items. Agenda Item 5A, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts enter authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. Automotive OEM proprietary parts and labor for Bluebird, Ford International, Thermo King, and Thomas Bus. Building materials and general maintenance supplies, college readiness. and general maintenance supplies, college readiness and career test, Cypress Falls High School bleacher replacement, energy and facility management software, Lenovo T540P laptops, school buses, swimming pool chemicals, supplies, parts, and repair. Any questions? Agenda item 5B, the board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds and general funds to the recommended contractor and authorize a superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. Pridgen Stadium pavement replacement and site improvements, package one. Running track improvements at Cyfair High School and Cypress Ridge High School, CFISD 2015 security upgrades. Questions from board members? Mr. Jackson?
Roy, on the second item, which is the running track improvement, with respect to the contract amount provided, is this fairly typical for a running track? And then, also, could you estimate, has the price changed in the last five years?
Glad to. Okay, now I'm on. The market right now, the construction market, as we've seen over the last couple of years, has increased tremendously in construction costs. Even though that has increased, we feel strongly that the pricing that we received on this package is within the current market and the scope that's there. And the actual percentage we're seeing over the last three or four years is about a 25% to 50% across the board increase in construction costs based on various trades. And a lot of that's due to labor costs as well as shortage of materials.
And then, a question on item three. As I read in the board book, this is largely for card readers and front door buzzers?
That is correct.
Does this include all campuses? Or will you be coming back to cover some campuses at a later time?
Now, this will include upgrades to all our existing campuses. So, every campus, when we're completed with this project, will have card reader access at their facilities. Some campuses have those devices installed right now, some do not. We'll be adding additional devices at campuses that already have them, and then bringing the other campuses up to a specified number that we're shooting for.
And would each campus have multiple locations of security?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from board members? Hey, also, forgot to tell y'all, guys, yeah, y'all can go on home. Just throwing that out there. Agenda item 5C, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent or designate to enter into the miscellaneous professional service contracts related to the following project, Pridgen Stadium pavement replacement and site improvements, package one. Questions? Agenda item 5D, the board will consider approving the instructional materials allotment and tech certification for 2015-16. Questions from board members? Agenda item 5E has been removed from the agenda, so that takes us to agenda item 5F. The board will consider approving the district textbook recommendations for 2015-16. Content areas included are listed K-12 social studies, K-12 art, K-12 music, K-12 theater arts, high school dance, high school mathematics, and AP physics C. Questions from board members? Agenda item 5G, the board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies EB local, EIB, EIA B local, EIF local. Questions from board members? Agenda item 5H, the board will consider approving the ratification of the issuance of an emergency purchase order to be paid from the general fund for the gym floor replacement cleanup restoration operations required resulting from a small fire and sprinkler system discharge which caused water damage at Spillane Middle School. Any questions from board members? Agenda item 5I, the board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Agenda item 5J, the board will consider approving the minutes of the March 5, 2015 regular meeting. That will now take us on to our non-consent items. Agenda item 6A, the board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies GKDA local, non-use of school facilities. Any questions? I'd like to move that to consent, please. Agenda item 6B, the board will consider approving the shared services, shared service arrangement between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and Northwest Harris County Cooperative for the deaf and hard of hearing. Any questions? Agenda, I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda item 6C, the board will consider approving an engagement letter between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and Weston Associates LLP in connection with the Engagement for Disclosure Council services and in accordance with the terms of the agreement. Questions from board members? Mr. Jackson?
Stuart, I guess this question is really for you. And it's the same question that I asked you a couple of years ago. We are changing our financial advisor now to Frost Bank. Does this continue a longstanding relationship? I'm on the wrong item. I thought that was D. You didn't say D?
No.
I'm on C.
We're on C.
Well, then, I'll be quiet.
Okay, all right. I'm guessing you're going to have a question on 6D. 6C, I'd like to move to consent. 6D, the board will consider approving a financial advisory agreement between Cypress Fairbanks ISD and Frost Bank in connection with the issuance of obligations of indebtedness and in accordance with the terms of the agreement. Tom?
Well, you finally got up to where I am. I mean, it says 6D right in front of me.
Oh, hey, before you ask the question, Stuart, could you introduce, before we go through all this, could you introduce Ryan and Phil, even though I just kind of said their names? But if you could just...
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I do want to introduce Mr. Ryan O'Hara. As you know, you've known Ryan for a long time. But I also want to introduce Phil Martin, also with Frost Bank.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Tom, go ahead.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, I think you, you almost answered my first question. Does this, even though we're getting a new financial advisor, does this continue a longstanding arrangement that we've had?
Yes, sir. It's a new agreement with Frost Bank, certainly, but it continues a longstanding relationship with Mr. O'Hara as our financial advisor.
Is Frost Bank a large enough player to be able to accommodate our needs on a going-forward basis?
Well, Frost Bank will not be buying any of our bonds, and so, when you talk in terms of their size and their ability to do that, they will not be involved in that. Certainly, they have the expertise and the capabilities to be able to advise us on an ongoing basis in terms of our bond portfolio.
I would say that my family has known the Frost family for multiple generations and holds them in highest regards, as well as that of the bank.
I might say that when we talk about the bonds that we sell, Frost Bank, during our last two bond sales, have purchased a very significant amount of our bonds.
That they'll be the managers going forward.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from board members? I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda item 6E, the board will consider the approval of an interlocal contract regarding installation, operation, and maintenance of research instrumentation between the University of Houston and Cypress Fairbanks ISD at designated campuses, and authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute the final terms and conditions and execute all documents. Questions from board members? I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda item 6F, the board will consider the approval and execution of the plat for Sadie Woodard Elementary School, number 54, located in Alder Trails at Barker Cypress and Cypress West Houston. Any questions from board members? I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda item 6G, the board will consider the approval of granting a temporary construction easement to Harris County to facilitate the roadside bench improvements along Barker Cypress at the Richard E. Berry Center, and authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and conditions and execute all documents. We don't have a need to go into closed session for this, do we, Dr. Hunter? No? Any questions from board members? I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda item 6H, the board will consider the approval of granting a temporary access construction easement and maintenance easement with Chesmoor Homes LTD for the purpose of the construction installation and maintenance of landscaping, irrigation, and sidewalk along Greenhouse Road at Postman Elementary School, and authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and conditions and execute all documents. Questions from board members? I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda item 6I has been removed from the agenda. That will lead us to agenda item 6J. The board will consider a Level III appeal of a Level II decision denying a parental grievance filed by Lisa and Todd Hoover. This item will be discussed in closed session pursuant to sections 551.074. May I have a motion to go into, before we have that motion to go into closed session, I need to remind everyone, the superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented Monday evening. Also, Monday evening, it'll be rather crowded up here because this will be when we have our annual board shadows, which is a blast for us that evening. And we get to expose the kids to just craziness. Plus, my shadow gets to do the entire meeting, so it's a win-win for me. And y'all. You're just jealous because you can't grow hair. Can I have a motion to go into closed session? Motion, Dr. Ogletree, second, Ms. Mongoya. All those in favor, please signify. We will come back out of closed session, but we will have no business that we'll be discussing at that time, just to close our meeting. I'd like to thank all of y'all that attended tonight, especially want to thank Martha and your staff at Winfern. Y'all are amazing, and thank you for your presentation, and thank you for being here tonight. And Tom, you did good. I mean, you married her.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Okay.[1750.43]